Discussing the in-law board needs the following items. A, how to best address the false or misleading statements made in public by Commissioner Dubois and others that constitute slander, in-law defamation, and character. B, inform and share with the board of documents, share with the board the documents sent to Commissioner Dubois, the alleged source, and how to best investigate and proceed. As we all know, we had a special meeting at our last open meeting in July, I believe it was April 22nd. Uh, what was it, I think, correct? Commissioner Dubois brought to the attention of this board a packet. And within that packet, the alleged back...
Oh, excuse me, the point being described in the June 20th meeting.
June 20th meeting.
There wasn't a second section.
Special meeting, June 20th meeting. And in the packet is alleged, uh, complaints of alleged misconduct, malfeasance, uh, and wrongdoing going on at the WHA. We have had to utilize our legal staff, Attorney Marcus, to obtain those documents. He refused to do stuff. And they have subsequently been produced and sent to Attorney Marcus, which is in your packet today. Without discussing the documentation within the packet, at that meeting, June 20th, one issue came to surface publicly, which Commissioner Dubois brought out, and referenced a vehicle purchase for Director Robege. At that meeting, I clearly, clearly identified the fact that the vehicle was purchased as an administrative vehicle. The vehicle was listed on the budget to be purchased with an amount of money not to exceed. Director Robege purchased the vehicle for the administration. And the purchase of that vehicle was done through an approved budget by the board commissioners. With that said, I personally, I'm going to give my opinion at this point, and it's my opinion. We have a number of other allegations within the packet, which I personally don't believe rise to anything concerning at this point. And we also have a couple other situations we have in the packet. We have allegations that are being made by former employees and people who are in the radio broadcasting business, alleging a lot of misconduct and malfeasances at the WHA. The third side of this is the fact that the documents left the WHA, and we don't know how or if they were captured, whether they were just provided without anybody's authorization, in violation of our rules and regulations. With that said, it's my opinion before this board tonight, today, that we should not be discussing what was in the packet. And we know what the allegations are, and we've all heard them. I have been able to obtain recordings from the conversations I've been taking place on the radio. I have forwarded those recordings to our attorney. Our attorney will highlight that in a second. She has subsequently came to a determination that they're very defaming, and in some of the cases, outright lies or slander. And I can address the letter forwarded, when you correct it. The letter forwarded?
Yes.
Based on those allegations, those statements being made, we spoke and our attorney has forwarded a cease and desist letter to WNRI. And the letter is addressed to the radio arm, Mr. Bicat, which addresses Thomas Brien, one of the radio individuals who does soapbox, and Attorney John Brien, who also has a show on WNRI. Based on those recordings that our attorney has looked at and reviewed, a number of statements that were made were very questionable, very least slanderous, and in some states outright lies. The cease and desist letter addresses none of those things. With that said, it is my suggestion to this board at this point that we don't convolute where we are at this point in this investigation. My suggestion is going to be that we empower our attorney through whatever resources that she needs, whether it be another attorney, whatever it may be, the follow-through on these three aspects we need to look at. One, the credibility of the documents provided by Commissioner Dubois and the validity of the allegations made. Now, you have to recall, Commissioner Dubois presented the documents, refused to present them to the board. We were entitled to have them. There's a case law in Timinon involving guilt that clearly defines that we as a body are entitled for those documents. We had to go through legal together. Two, we have an issue with the production of those documents. Where they come from, how come they weren't provided, and who they were provided to, and how they were obtained, the process by which they were obtained. And again, our third issue here is what's being put out, was put out on the radio, that defames this organization, its members and members of this board. My suggestion is going to be tonight that we do not engage any discussion regarding how we feel and what we think. I think that we should be making a motion to engage our attorney, whatever resources Attorney Marcus needs, whether it's assistance, whatever it may be, the follow-through on those three aspects. And make a determination on the full report to this organization within the next six to eight weeks, depending on the timeframe that she needs, to conduct interviews, research, documentation. How the documentation was released, and the validity of the allegation being made by Commissioner Dubois. And if you recall, on one of the shows, he alleged he was an island by himself, and it was malfeasance, and I believe the serious allegations specifically coming from Commissioner is pretty disturbing. So we need to ensure the fact that this is done properly, professionally, and with no bias. So it's going to be my opinion at this point in time that we follow through in this direction. The floor is open for discussion, and I'm willing to withdraw for our own questions. Commissioner Gassip.
Just absorbing the things you said right now, if the other commissioners want to comment?
Commissioner Regan.
I think I agree with Commissioner Gassip. I'd like to absorb this without making any statements due to the fact that this is serious, and I think this needs to be handled appropriately and transparently, like we have done since I got on the board, and I believe we've done before I got on the board. And I have full faith in our legal services to handle this appropriately.
Commissioner Sayge.
I wasn't here at the time before this thing happened.
No.
There's not much I have to say right now, because it's all I can say for me.
Okay.
Good point.
Good point, very, very good point.
I can comment if the board would like. If they would provide a little context for the board's discussion and elaboration of these two agenda items. So with regard to the first agenda item, if the board would like to go in that order, as the chairman stated, how best to address the false and misleading statements made in public by Commissioner Dubois and others that constitute slander, slander per se, and/or defamation of character. With regard to that, the most pertinent evidence, as the chairman stated, is our certain radio hosts and programs on WNRI. Reports were sent to me and I transcribed them, and with a legally trained eye toward, you know, what is free speech? Because free speech is a highly protected right. We all have the right to voice our opinions, and politically, free speech is one of the highest protected items in the First Amendment, political and religious, freedom of religion. And, but, it's not permissible, it's illegal to state something false in public, particularly when it definitely disparages someone's business or perfection for that person. So the slander per se is a different definition legally than slander. Slander per se is when it affects someone's business or perfection. So the way I view what was stated in those two radio programs that I am privy to is that both radio show hosts, Mr. Thomas Brien and John Brien, in my view, stated false, disparaging comments to the public that constitute slander per se. So what I had the authority to do as general counsel, and I represent the organization, was to send a cease and desist letter to the station manager and to those two radio hosts. And I cited verbatim the specific statements that they said on the air that we believe, we as an organization, know and believe to be false. So with regard to Agenda Item 1, those individuals have been impressed right now with the cease and desist, and I made it very clear, you know, we don't want to take legal action, we want to resolve this tamquably, but these items that you stated are patently false. So please stop, and please contact me to discuss any of this or any questions. Again, you know, my intention on behalf of the organization is to call it out when something legal is being done and to try tamquably resolve it, so the impermissible conduct will stop. I have not, so that was those two gentlemen.
So that's in reference to, so you've presented that that's been received by the board's authority?
Correct.
How we now wait and see?
Partially, yes. As to those individuals, yes. Although what I did yesterday, I emailed the document, so it was received immediately, you know, whenever they checked their email. And then I forwarded it up with a hard copy in U.S. mail. So that's as to those individuals. I have not yet taken action with Commissioner Dubois, although I have six examples from the verbatim transcript of the radio show, and I can share them with you. Suffice it to say, they are false and/or misleading. Some of them are just patently false, some of them are misleading, where like some of the radio show hosts, you know, part of the story is told, and then a conclusion is stated that if you told the whole story, that conclusion would not be accurate. They're disparaging to the housing authority, Commissioner Dubois said something that was disparaging to the fellow commissioners. And one of the statements, I was at the meeting that the item that he talked about took place, and what he stated was both false and misleading. Because he was at this meeting, the item was aired, it was questioned. So I think it's appropriate to also send to him a cease and desist in the same way. Serious about and clear about, look, this is what you said, and this is why it's not permissible. Please stop, you know, don't undertake legal action, but we do need to let you know that what you're saying and doing is not legal, and it's needlessly disparaging the organization and some of its personnel. So I think at this point that I'm, if the board is comfortable with that, you know, I think that's appropriate at this juncture, but I'm hoping to accept any objections.
I have, uh...
Yeah, no, I mean, there's a couple sides to this too. There's like the emotional side, and there's the legal side. And I think that, you know, we shouldn't get caught up in the emotional side, we should get caught up in the legal side. And I think the way the attorney stated all the facts there, for me, I feel very comfortable. I agree with Commissioner Regan that, you know, we've always been advised in my tenure on this board, we've always been advised in the most professional, knowledgeable manner, and I think that's what we should be going forward. I fully trust everything that was just said right now. I'm in full agreement. I mean, I think that, you know, there are some things that, you know, I personally didn't listen to the radio show, but obviously, you know, those things were stated as public knowledge. So, you know, unfortunate situation, but I would agree with Attorney Marcus, and, you know, I would be strongly agree with, you know, the motion that you want to make to a letter in pursuit of the actions, course of actions that are necessary to rectify this individual.
Commissioner Regan.
Please, what would be future actions, so we're aware what possibly could happen if this continues?
Future actions, and hopefully it will not come to that, would be to take legal action in court. That would take two forms. The first that I would suggest, presuming if the conduct at this level continues despite the cease and desist letters, that the small step, if you will, would be to get basically the equivalent of a restraining order to get the court to order them to stop doing these things. So that's considered an equitable remedy. You know, the court is using its empty jurisdiction to tell someone to stop doing something because it's not legal. The second, the second step, and I'm not advising this at this point, but it's a legitimate option, would be to file lawsuit seeking damages. And slander per se, the reason I chose that and I made sure for the well-respected legal definition that it fit, that's a lower burden of proof on the housing authority's side. So that, I feel confident that the statements that I heard on the recording fit the legal definition of slander per se. So the housing authority would be well positioned to prevail. I think we're, as we all agree, we're not there yet. Hopefully, the cease and desist will suffice, but those are the two legal avenues that are applicable here.
Kurt, when you started, you mentioned having this come to an amicable ending.
Yes.
Is that should be the focus that you go towards, and hopefully that will work out by just sending this initial letter?
Yes. I think, you know, if this, the letters are sent, you know, the letters that I sent, and if the board agrees, the letter that I would send to Commissioner Dubois would be sent in good faith. They would be factual, and I'm not fabricating or taking out the context anything they said. It's sticking to the facts, you know, very clear, this is not permissible, please stop, and giving them the benefit of the doubt that they would stop. Now, and I, they, we're not asking them to stop exercising their right to free speech. So that's clear. We're just, the letter helps them, and I can chair it with the board. I can send a dual copy of that letter, simply asking them to stop those misleading and false statements. If something is factual or if it's their opinion, and they're making a clear to the listening audience that it's their opinion, that could arguably be free speech. But the examples I've heard, some of them fit that description, so those obviously were not included in the letter, but the ones that were legally impermissible is what I focused on. And would, what Commissioner Dubois words as well. Thank you.
I'm not going to be the boss. I've taken a position, and I've been on both sides. Statements were made, as I've indicated, I think there's three sides to this debate. One, how did our documents get released from the WHA? Were they authorized, taken from AFRA, perhaps you found that? Two, we need to address Commissioner Dubois specifically. It's one thing to stand and make an opinion, and you're entitled to it, but it's a different ballgame to go on radio and tell people that there's malfeasance within the organization, so to speak, and that it's an island under the zone. It paints a very dim picture of this organization, all of which is untrue. The third issue I have is that a number of very, very derogatory slander statements were made, and I think at some point, these people have to be held accountable for what they said. If you're going to accuse the organization of malfeasance, then you need to bring to the table the documents and the evidence that support your allegation. And I think that we need to have that addressed, and that has to be documented in a report, so that in the future, we're not going to have, well, you know, he said it was half-full, he said it was half-empty. No, we didn't do that. We did due diligence, we gave everyone a minute for the doubt, and we did it to transparency. We employed our legal staff to handle at least three facets of this issue, and to interview these people, do a deposition if needed, and make a determination that, yes, the lies that were put forward were lies, or the allegations being put forward have validity, and we have to address them. We're not going to get to that point if we don't hold the tide to the ground, to the fault, in my opinion. I personally believe it's going way too far, and I believe that we as an organization need to get something solid. In writing, a report that says, we did our due diligence, the allegations made were false, we interviewed the people making them allegations, we have a more dignified than we did in the previous investigation. And if that takes six or eight weeks, whatever it takes, it takes. That's my opinion. And my motion is going to be that we employ our attorney, or whatever resources she needs, to follow through on those three facets. How the documents were released. Commissioner Dubois' allegations. Remember, Commissioner Dubois, not somebody outside the building who has an opinion. There were serious allegations made publicly here, and made publicly on the radio. And three allegations being made, one by a former employee alleging corruption, misconduct. I think those questions have to be directly asked. If that evidence comes to fruition, it has to be brought to our attention, and I think we have to address them. And I think it has to be on paper, and it has to be documented, so that it's a full, solid record that can be followed. I'm all done with he said, she said, well, I thought, I wanted it in writing. I want our reputation cleared, I want our name cleared, and if in fact we did this, or there is a malfeasance, and I'm open-minded, ladies and gentlemen, I want investigated, and I want it fixed. That's my opinion. My motion to a year is avoided, is that we empower our attorney, whatever resources she needs, to follow through on those three facets. Who released the documents, and why? The validity of the allegations made by Commissioner, and the validity of the allegations made by an attorney and a former employee. That's my motion. Before discussion.
I believe I'm at your opinion, because most of us, for separate Commissioner St. George, who wasn't here, this is not something we should do as a working group or subcommittee of us commissioners, because we have some part of this. You feel that it's better that we do this independently, so there shows no bias and no, you know, basically bias from the people above.
That's a great question, and I'll answer it this way. And with Attorney Capazza and I happen to represent several housing authorities and other public entities. We happen to have several mutual clients. We're the two attorneys for that housing authority, and then other clients that we don't represent together. The protocol that we're accustomed to when complaints, whether they're with a complaint's name or anonymous, the protocol, and I advised Commissioner Dubois of this numerous times from the get-go, when I was asking him to please give the attorneys the documents anonymously sent documents. The usual protocol is when other commissioners from other boards receive such complaints and documents, they usually notify the chairman of whatever board that is, and they notify the attorneys. So the attorneys can do an impartial, independent investigation. I stated that in several emails to Commissioner Dubois. And that's just the usual protocol, because, right, you know, we're not on the board, we're law-trained, we have ethical and legal duties, so it's, you know, truly, it's thorough and impartial. So that's one avenue to go, is, you know, for the board to empower the attorney or attorneys. However, the cover letter of this anonymous complaint, on the third page of it, it states something about, you know, how about a subcommittee of the board, with excluding, she stated to exclude the chairman and vice chairman, but, you know, have the board investigate this. So part of me thinks, well, you know, what's the validity, and, you know, could there be a benefit to involving a subcommittee of the board? This was sent to a board member, so, you know, how about a subcommittee of the board, for example, you know, Commissioner Dubois, if he so true chose, and any other commissioners excluding the leadership, which, you know, the sender requested. So, you know, other boards, on one occasion, another board has done that as well. So, you know, that can be, that can be appropriate. Although the other board that did that, it was an allegation against management, not against the board. So I'm kind of torn. I think we could do, we, the board could consider doing the hybrid, where if the board chose, you know, they have a subcommittee of the board, and have the attorney be on that subcommittee, like I'm on the other board's subcommittee as well. So there's, you know, there's pros and cons to each one. But I thought it was curious that the sender of this complaint suggested a subcommittee of the board, because in my mind, it's more impartial to have an attorney. But, you know, I think that's an idea worth looking for the board to consider.
I personally say I'm not a law enforcement person, I'm not a legal expert. I would think I am qualified to conduct any kind of investigation or hearing. I strongly feel this should be done appropriately by people who know what they're doing, and I wholeheartedly support Commissioner or Chairman, please.
Okay. I don't want, yeah, you. Yeah, me. Commissioner Gassip.
Yeah, I would think that, I think it's a nice suggestion to have the opportunity to involve that. I think we, in order to keep it non-biased, you know, that maybe just the initial way of approaching that would probably be my preferred option.
Thanks.
I would go with that. I think this is unique in the sense to ongoing as well. And I just want to make one more comment if I could.
Please, sir.
And it's on your third point. And I've been part of this board for about three and a half years, and every meeting we got a public round. There's not been one instance, to my recollection, that anyone's spoken negatively about the board, commission, or the housing authority. And every individual has the open, the right to do so every single time. We get hit heavy on social media, we get hit heavy in the newspapers. This is, you know, we're a very approachable team here. You've worked with us for a few years, Attorney Capazza's worked with us for a few years, we have the privilege to work with Director Robege. I think we're very respectful towards each other. So that's a disappointing thing. We have an open, public forum, and if people need to express themselves, I'd love to hear them. You know, I don't want to hear someone saying that I'm associated with the perfect person X or person Y, or he's associated with person X or person Y, or former police chief, whatever. Come here and what's your opinion? We, I don't care about the external noise, that's mine. If we have a duty here, our duty's here, we follow our protocol, and our duty's here to provide services to the director, to the staff, to the housing authority, to make concrete decisions for the business decisions. And we want a feedback. This is no, this door's open until we have exactly a reception. Anyone can come in this room. So I'm very disappointed that all this stuff's going on, but in the sense that all these people are welcome. You have these women from the housing authority that come every time, or numerous ones, but that's my disappointment with this whole thing. So I just wanted to voice that comment on behalf of your point number three.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Regan, I want to promote on the motion. Motion is to employ and authorize our attorney and whatever resources she needs to prove, to address the free-prong issues regarding the release of documents, the issue regarding the validity of the allegations made by a certain commissioner, specifically Commissioner Dubois, and to interview, and if so, the host, the individuals who've received a cease and desist letter to address the allegations being made, or were made on live radio, and ask to have those allegations supported with the documents and facts and information, and to basically either support or deny the allegation. And I think that has to be done, and we need to get that done in writing in our report call. So that's the motions, and we have a second.
Just so I'm clear.
Yep.
One motion, one investigation, we both A, B...
A, B, and C. A, B, and C. A is the release of the documents. B is going to be the validity of the allegations made by Commissioner Dubois. And C will be the interview and depositions of the three, of the two radio broadcast people, Attorney John Bream and Tommy Bream, to the validity of the allegations made, that were made, that invoked a cease and desist order, and allow our attorney to do so in whatever fashion she needs, the resources she needs to do it. That was the motion. We have a first, by Commissioner Regan. We have a second by Commissioner Gassit.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Gassit.
Yes.
Commissioner St. George. Commissioner Regan?
Yes.
Chairman, yes, and the ayes have it. Motion to adjourn.
I agree.
Correction, sir. Mr. Regan?
So that, that A, B, and C, as you articulated, that pertain to Agenda Item A and B?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, so I'm in power to send a cease and desist to Commissioner Dubois?
You are.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And you're empowered to utilize whatever resources you need to conduct a full investigation on those three, on those three, three aspects.
Yes, okay.
Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Gassit, seconded by Commissioner St. George. Do you approve this motion? Commissioner? All in favor? Aye, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. I normally get a call. The cease and desist that was forwarded to W N R I.
Yes.
Is that public documents?
Probably, yes, yes.
Is that public documents?
Yeah, there's something, oh, yes. It's not even subject, but they're not in the client.
Yep. But I normally get a call when they go through a proper round.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, I see. Definitely. Yes. I'm being right over there. I'm getting a message. You're going, you're going by this thing? All right. I know you're open. Take your box below my back seat.
Oh, there's a First Amendment.
Excuse me?
There's a First Amendment. Reports, by the way. Are you ready? Gentlemen, since the law seems to be first and foremost amongst here, do any of you have any comment on the egregious breach of law that your respected comrade engaged in this past week? Is there anything that embarrasses Governor Woodsocket?